Just to please announce yourself so those that are watching and also in attendance can see who's working in their behalf. Thank you.
Hi, Bridget Doherty, running the different PowerPoints.
Jacqueline Panietto, Clerk of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Attorney Office.
Thank you so much, Stephanie Summer Odumis, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commission. We have quite a few things on our agenda today. We'll move straight into Commissioner Greg Kesterman is here to talk to us about an update on the issues related to COVID-19. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for having me today. So since I last presented, numbers continue to trend in the, in the wrong direction. We continue to see lots of activity with COVID within our community. We are now up to about 7,000 active cases of COVID, so those are cases of individuals that are sick and have not yet recovered. And that number continues to increase week after week. As far as when we were at our peak, or where we're at today compared to our peak, back in December, we were at 716 cases per day. And today, we are not that high, but continuing to grow week after week. We're at 361 active cases of COVID each day. So that number continues to be alarming. As far as percent positivity, we are at 11 and a half percent positive for the 14 county region. Hamilton County sitting right around 11% as a county as a whole. We are continuing to watch the testing numbers, which are the bottom graph. And we are right around where we were at back in December with regards to testing, which from my perspective is great news. We want folks who are sick to go out, get tested, find out if they have COVID so they can isolate themselves and help protect our community. I'm continuing to see lots of activity with testing around the community. There's lots of free test kits out there. And the Test and Protect Program is still active within Hamilton County. Our reproductive value continues to trend above one. We are at 1.33 today. The region is at 1.25. Also disappointing is our hospital numbers. These continue to trend upward at a very rapid rate. Our hospitals have 441 patients within the systems, 126 people within the intensive care unit, of which 110 are on ventilators, so all heading in the wrong direction as well. When you look up at the makeup of those within our hospital systems, you can see the full bar here represents everyone in the state of Ohio. And the dark shade at the bottom represents those in southwest Ohio. The trends are the same across the state. We are seeing the greatest impact in those between the ages of 60 and 69 right now. They're ending up in the hospital at a higher rate. As far as our level of community transmission, we have 313 folks per 100,000 that have COVID within our community. And as mentioned, our percent positivity is right around 11%. That classifies Hamilton County as an area of substantial spread. And once again, that means masks are recommended in all areas and extra caution is recommended. We continue to make a lot of progress with vaccinations here in Hamilton County. Looking at those above the age of 12, we are at 65%, which is excellent news. We continue to move that needle week after week. Compared to the state of Ohio, the state's at 52%. And Hamilton County is at 55%, so we continue to make a lot of progress that way as well. The other good news from a vaccination standpoint is finally, for those that are 50 to 59, we have hit that 70% threshold, which is the federal goal for vaccinations. So another group where they need to be, I'm happy to see that. And then I'm also happy to see, week after week, particularly for those between the ages of 20 and 50, we continue to see at least 1% increase each week in vaccinations for those demographics. You hear me say this week after week, but I'll continue to reiterate, the vaccines are extremely effective. If you've been vaccinated, the breakthrough rate for hospitalizations is 2.54. And for death, it's one, about 1%. So we have an extremely effective vaccine that's doing its job. We continue to work on motivating the public. We have given out about 420 gift cards. We have another 5,000 ordered coming in today. And we continue to make a lot of progress and we'll continue to go to the neighborhoods where we need to make more progress and incentivize that vaccine. And just lastly, around Hamilton County, we have tons of access to get vaccinated. In the county, about 100 providers. In the region, about 200 providers. Lots of chances to get vaccinated if you want to get a vaccine. That is all I have, Commissioners. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I will open it up. Vice President Reese, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Health Commissioner Kesterman. One of the things I just wanted to highlight, can you go back to that breakthrough slide? And you said a 2.54% breakthrough. Can you break that down so people watching, so what does that actually mean?
Absolutely. So in the case of breakthroughs here in Ohio, we do not look at individuals who have been vaccinated and get sick. Many of those individuals do not report at all. And many of those individuals don't get tested. But if you end up in the hospital, you're getting tested and we know for sure you have been vaccinated or not vaccinated. And we know for sure if you've had COVID or not. So what this number represents is of people who've end up in the hospital, if they've been vaccinated and get COVID, 548 people have said yes to both of those questions. And a test has shown that they have had COVID. And so we know that out of 100 people, 97.5% of people have not been vaccinated yet. And it's super important to get that message out there. Vaccine keeps you out of the hospital.
Got you. And then also, can you talk about Children's Hospital? We read some stories that there's some concern, a lot of children are in the hospital. Can, can you give an update on what's going on with that?
So when talking with leadership at Children's Hospital, they're indicating they're seeing higher numbers now than they have at other, than at other points in the pandemic. Some of that could be related to the Delta variant, but certainly a lot of it is associated with children getting sick. And so they are seeing lots of activity within the emergency rooms. Sometimes that means if you need regular care for like a broken arm or something, your care is slowed down because they're seeing other patients. And so Children's is really encouraging masking, which is something we've heard from, from myself and, and public health in general, to help slow the spread and to help keep kids safe.
Thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate, people can go to your website and also our 513relief.org to find out where the mobile units are and other locations. I know the 513 Relief Bus is at Lincoln Heights today, at St. Monica, I believe, from 1:30 to 4:00. But we have lots of places and they could go to the website, right? No appointment needed, right?
That's correct. 513 has no appointment needed. And also, on this map, every blue dot represents a location you can just walk in. No appointment needed. If you've been waiting or if you're kind of thinking, thinking twice today, today is your chance to walk into any of those sites and get vaccinated.
Awesome. And they can get those locations on the website, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Greg, I just wanted to highlight something that you said and ask a question related to it. So when you talk about the folks that are getting COVID, I guess it was, that, that was the, the 60 to 69 age group? And how that is the largest population? And when I go back and look at the percentage of those, those ages that are vaccinated, so the 60 to 64 is 78%. And the 65 to 69 is 85%. What do you attribute that to? I mean, why are folks, and I assume anybody in the hospital probably doesn't have a vaccine to, to your earlier comments. Why, why is it that we're seeing an increase there? Do you have any theories?
Well, certainly, those that are not vaccinated are highly susceptible to COVID still, no different than a year ago. And so even though we've had really great success in that age group with vaccinations, there's still 20% that have not been vaccinated. And so the disease is still very susceptible for that, for that non-vaccinated cohort.
Okay. It just, it just strikes me that that age group is getting it at a higher rate, even though the vaccine rates are fairly high. They're still getting it at a pretty high percentage.
I think the other thing important to point out is, you know, early on, the first group to get vaccinated, we were successful in the nursing homes at getting in and getting folks vaccinated. But there's still a decent por, there was still a decent proportion of the nursing home that didn't get vaccinated. And so it's still, there are still instances where one person sick in a nursing home can turn into several people sick within a nursing home. And so if you've not been vaccinated, your risk is still significant.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner, for all that you do and all that your team does. And I was going to really wait till Thursday to make a, a point about it. I read in the newspaper, and you have to be careful what you read in the newspaper, but it does have impact on our community. And so the newspaper indicated that there have been no briefing since May, and that is absolutely not true. The format and the strategy that was used to inform our community, we decided to change it because the numbers were going down at that point, May and June. So we decided to have you come in every other week to give the numbers, to give the impact, to, to give the changes for the community. And then we have since asked you, since the numbers are going up, to come in every week. So I just want to make it clear to the media, to the community, that we at no time stopped briefings. Briefings is when you give pertinent information in a certain situation or circumstance. So I decided as President that we did not need the briefings anymore. And that we would continue to have your information coming into us and also the people that are listening. So don't believe that we were sitting on our hands after the quote "briefings" that were every once a week and not doing anything and not disseminating the information to our community. We would never do that. So just want to let people know that are listening, that that did not happen. We continue to give information. You continue to come in. And as I said, you will be coming in every week. So I thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any media that might be here that, I don't see any media here, that have any questions. And we plan on doing that every time that you come, Commissioner, to make sure that there are no questions that are asked. So thank you.
And if I could, you know, routinely, my office is in communication with the media. In addition, I really am proud of my team's work to make our website as transparent as possible. All of the data that I shared, you can find either on our website or linked. And so the public really has access to 24/7 public health information, which has really been something throughout the pandemic that I've been proud of my team for.
And you should be. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move to our next agenda item, working with immigrants and refugees in Hamilton County. Brian Wright is here. From Cincinnati Compass. Welcome.
Thanks for having us, President Dumas, Vice President Reese, Commissioner Dreehouse. I'm Brian Wright. I'm the Executive Director of Cincinnati Compass. And I'm here with two guests as well. And so we'll start with Tony Stirrit, who is the President and CEO of Catholic Charities of Southwest Ohio.
Sure.
Thank you, Brian. President Dumas, thank you for having us. I'm Tony Stirrit, CEO of Catholic Charities Southwestern Ohio. As the single Refugee Resettlement Agency for Hamilton County and its surrounding counties in Ohio, I want to thank you for your sincere interest in this conversation today. Our faith-based mission to protect the lives and human dignity of all has guided our work to resettle over 10,000 refugees since 1980. A number of county entities have been steadfast partners with us to ensure successful resettlements during that time. These include the Department of Jobs and Family Services, the LEP Division especially. Their staff are very culturally sensitive, respectful, and treat individuals with dignity. And most recently, we've appreciated the work of Commissioner Kesterman and the Health Commission, who's worked with us on getting COVID-19 vaccines to refugee communities. In addition, I want to thank Commissioners for responding to a request we had two years ago for local consent for refugee resettlement. At that time, the previous administration required resettlement agencies to receive affirmation in writing from local governments that they would welcome the refugees whom we resettled. Commissioner Dreehouse did not hesitate to offer support from the county for this process. And this has shown us even to this day, a, a clear sense of solidarity with the newcomers that are coming to our community. So I want to provide you with a few updates regarding the state of refugee resettlement in our region today. First off, it's always important to note upfront that those who arrive here through the U.S. Refugee Resettlement Program are a specific type of immigrant who have specifically fled persecution due to race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or membership in a particular social group. Typically, they have spent years in the resettlement pipeline, having been vetted by multiple federal agencies before arriving in the U.S. Refugees are distinct from the many other immigrants in need, including those seeking asylum at our borders, who aren't afforded such a clear pathway to residency. And during the previous administration, few refugees were admitted into the U.S. And federal fiscal year '21, Catholic Charities of Southwestern Ohio, we only resettled 11 refugees during the full fiscal year. So we have focused our energies on longer-term support for the refugees who are already here, including ongoing job readiness, financial literacy, ESOL services, youth mentoring, and case management to deal with the pandemic. We have worked hard, and thanks to the community's support, to maintain our staffing infrastructure. So we're poised today to now receive an anticipated 225 individuals in the next federal fiscal year starting in October. In the wake of the chaos in Afghanistan, the U.S. and world are now struggling to receive the incredible number of persecuted and terrified Afghan families. Because the typical refugee resettlement process takes far too long, the U.S. has created a couple of unique pathways for certain Afghans to arrive sooner. First is the Special Immigrant Visa Program, which was created for Afghans who assisted the U.S. government since 2001, such as through support to American troops serving as political advisors and interpreting. These SIVs, as they're called, can choose to relocate wherever in the U.S. they wish. And they can also opt in or out of the refugee support services that we provide. Secondly, a new initiative called the American Parolee Support Program was just recently established to provide a temporary residential status for non-SIV Afghans. These parolees can receive short-term services from a refugee resettlement agency as ours. And they would not qualify for many other benefits afforded to regular refugees or SIVs. They will also need to find other ways to substantiate long-term residency, as such as through asylum. So Catholic Charities has been informed that we would receive an SIV Afghan family of eight in the near future. We have made clear to our national contacts that we are willing and able to resettle more should we be asked. It's important to note that the local Afghan community is relatively small compared to other cities. And most Afghans choose to go where they already know someone, if they already have U.S. ties. We've resettled five Afghan SIV families, a total of 31 individuals since 2016. Whatever is asked of us during this emergency, we stand ready. We are deeply heartened by the outpouring of goodwill from the community for these Afghan families and all refugees right now. While we do receive support from the federal government via our cooperative agreement, resettlement requires a great deal of community solidarity that involves money, housing, and basic necessities. Whenever this Afghan family should arrive, it's clear our community will heartily embrace them. As I noted, we're expecting 225 refugees in the next fiscal year, who have been stuck in the pipeline that has been virtually shut down a few years ago. So far, we are seeing them come from Syria, the Congo, and Sudan. And these refugees are equally deserving for a chance at life here. And I know our community will enthusiastically welcome them as well. So I encourage your support of the resolution that is before you today in support of Afghan families. And we do have a few recommendations for some language changes to clarify the definition of refugee and to include some of these other new categories that the federal government has created for this situation. And lastly, one additional request for support from the county is that our agency convenes a quarterly community consultation meeting that includes public officials. We could very much benefit from the county sending a, a representative to this continuous quality improvement process for us and to keep an open stream between us and the county on the state of refugee resettlement on the ground. So thank you again for all your support and God bless our efforts to advance the lives and dignity of these future citizens. I'm happy to take any questions or move on to the additional representative.
Ah, we can move on to the additional. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good. It feels like morning, but is this the morning? My name is Prince Ellis and I'm the President for UPNET, UpNest Dance for the African Professional Network. I'll share a personal story, although it's not part of this, but I came to the States about '98 and came in as an immigrant. Now I teach at UC, I'm a UC professor at UC. So I know that Cincinnati has been a home for me. And I'm glad that Brian brought me here just to share, share mine, to, to help with this resolution. So it's really, it's special for me to be here. And I also serve as the, one of the Commissioners for the New African Immigrant Commission by the Governor. So I go to the City House every quarter for, for, for meetings on issues that affects the African community overall. So, so my, me being here, my really, I'm here just to provide support to the resolution declaring Hamilton County as a welcoming county, but also to support all the local efforts to, to resettle Afghan refugees. I know this, this county is a great county and that we have to make it home for people. We have to make it, people feel welcome. I think this resolution would just fit, fit that, will make it happen. So some of the benefits for making the county welcome personally is just you being, feel like you're home, really. I mean, I think I personally, this place feels first like I'm home, really. I'm, even though I'm from Ghana, Cincinnati in the county is like my second home. I've been here pretty much all my life. I went to NKU, finished my grad work, and then I did, I did my graduate degree and I'm back and teaching at UC. So this is home. So I call this place my, my home. And, and I know that when people feel like they are home, and I, I could see from my personal life, when it feel like you're home, you really are engaged in the, in, in our community. And personally with UPNET, we formed UPNET 2010, just support, to give back to the African community in partnership with city agencies, organizations, and groups that, that, so really, we, I remember when I was in school, there were groups on campus that made me feel at home. I finished school and I really, there wasn't any, any kind of connection to the city. So we formed this group to bridge that gap. And I think I'm glad Brian and his team has always been very supportive of the city. I don't think it has come along yet. I think you guys have done a great job. But I think this resolution will, will make things happen. And I think we also have to try to, to celebrate diversity. You know, we all, we all come from different places, different times. And I think it's good for us to celebrate diversity. It is also good for us to, I, I believe it was the right thing to do. I think it makes sense that we have to be on the right side of history at some point. And so really, I, I'm not going to make it too, too long. It's just really a personal story. But also, with UPNET being in the city for about 10 years, even last year, we were awarded one of the, we were given a proclamation from the city last year. So it's a lot of work, but sometimes it feels like we need more help from the county itself. And I think I'm glad I'm here and thanks to Brian for, for including me in this. There's a lot of potentials that newcomers and refugees can contribute. And we just have to make them feel at home. That's always pretty much the need. I think once they feel at home, the sky is the limit. And I think I'm a story, I'm, I'm one of the, the story to, to just what happened to me when I came. I think I thought I felt at home. And, and I think I've been doing a, in partnership with the, the board members, we always do the best we can to, to, to give back. But we have to. For me, that's passion for, for my, I do with UPNET, I guess as a volunteer. And I'm always around doing the best I can to support the community the best that I can. Because again, I, I'm a benefit of this place being welcome to me. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks again for the time to present and I'm thankful for having Tony and Prince here with me as well. So again, I'm Brian Wright. I'm the Executive Director of Cincinnati Compass. And we're an organization that works to advance cultural and economic inclusion of immigrants and refugees across the Cincinnati region. We're partners of the Cincinnati, the City of Cincinnati, the Cincinnati USA Regional Chamber, about 55 partner organizations who believe that immigrants and refugees strongly contribute to a regional vibrant economy. And so I wanted to be here today to share my support of the resolution and share a little bit of data as to why, and then also make an ask. So I want to draw some attention to some of the data, like who is coming to the Cincinnati region and to Hamilton County. One of the things that we know that, with the recent census data coming out, that we know that we're seeing some population growth, which is very important. Another thing I'd like to point to is that 98% of population growth between 2014 and 2017, 98% was due to immigrants and refugees coming to our region. So it's a, it's a population that was smaller, but it's, it's growing and growing rapidly. As you'll see, we have 6% of the population here in the, in the Cincinnati region, as well in, in Hamilton County, is at 6%. But also want to know where, what's in 6% recently, so Deloitte and MIT have a data hub called Data USA. And they have it at almost 10% of immigrants and refugees in Hamilton County alone. Also, we have a very diverse population, where you'll see almost 20% come from the continent of Africa, 42% from Asia, 10% from Europe, 26% from Latin America, and so on. Also, while it's a, it's a growing population, when I started this work at Cincinnati Compass in 2017, the regional population, immigrant population was at 3.5%. So now we're up to 6 and potentially 9 or 10%. So it is a rapidly growing population. And really, a population that really punches above its weight class. So if you look at the total household income at $4.1 billion, contributing over almost $390 million in state and local taxes, with a total spending power of $2.9 billion that they can reinvest into our local economies. So it's a really strong community, but also one that is in need of support. So we'll see where there's a highly educated talent of about 40, over 40% that have a bachelor's degree or higher. The issue is that is that they're woefully underemployed. So we have, what we do is try to work to advance, you know, inclusive hiring and retention practices, working with groups like the African Professional Network to help internationally trained professionals get back in their field, to get back into helping in healthcare, to start businesses, to work with Catholic charities, both with SUKASA and the Refugee Resettlement Organizations, to help get into surviving, not jobs that are just for survival, but to help advancing careers. It's really to help families grow and thrive and also to help strengthen the economy. And so what I also point out is, so while there's some great news, we also, we recently conducted a study, well, it was about a year ago now, with a group called, that we started called CARES Cincinnati Civic Action for Refugee Empowerment. They were trained in research methods. And, and, and so we were able to conduct some surveys on the impact of refugees during the pandemic. And we'll see that largely that there was seven different populations. The Booneese community is the largest refugee population in the state of Ohio. And we see that also reflected here in Hamilton County. And also the Congolese. And so it was a survey of 177 participants in seven different languages. And we'll see some of the, the challenges that the community members are facing. 52% of those surveyed saw a loss of, of employment due to the pandemic. Also, 54% of those unemployed received no supplemental income. And 30, about a third were expected to, to lose employment in the next four weeks. So there are some situations that we're still, and we're obviously still in a raging pandemic now. And so there's some ongoing support. And so one thing that is very helpful is to have a, a resolution to show support for refugees coming from Afghanistan, but also to show that, that Hamilton County is a welcoming county. The power of that symbolically, that you've heard from Tony and Prince is very, it's very powerful to know that when people arrive, that they, they can have a sense of belonging and feel a sense of home. And so this leads to the next question, the ask that I have, is that with the resolution, And so this leads to the next question that I asked that I have, is that with the resolution that shows support for Afghan refugees, but then also for declaring Hamilton County a welcoming county, I would like to make an ask to consider how, what does that look like going forward? What kind of work can we do to ensure the ongoing equitable allocation of resources, the inclusive practices of the, across the county to support immigrant refugee community members coming to our region? So I'd ask that we consider the creation of a commission, similar to the Commission on Women and Girls, or the Economic Inclusion Advisory Council, to really, to really be a platform for residents of Hamilton County, particularly immigrant refugees, to make recommendations on how, on existing practices and future practices to be more equitable and accessible for the, for the county and for the immigrant refugee committees who are obviously making large contributions to our county. And so again, I would see, you know, it would be a platform, we want it to be symbolic, right? To have people have a platform, people to share their voice, to feel like they're connected to the county, but also be ambassadors to refer back so that people can build trust with county departments and offices, to build trust with the commissioners, for example, to be able to speak on behalf of the county and be connected to resources, but also really to help shape policies, to look at, again, you know, whether it's allocation of resources or accessibility, which, you know, Commissioner Gregg was here earlier, we've done a lot of work together to make sure from vaccine drives to sharing resources in multiple languages, so there's already some great work happening. But we want to further continue that work and drive it forward. So again, I would ask, I'm here to show support for the, for the existing resolution, but we want to make an ask of a consideration for a body like a commission on immigrants and refugees, or Commission on New Americans, whatever it be called, to really help to further continue this work going forward. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much. If you can just stay up there, we may have some comments or questions. I just wanted to indicate there is no resolution before us at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As a board, we may consider that to bring forth at a future meeting. And I think I heard someone saying we have to make sure that Hamilton County is a welcoming community, county. And I know we do that, but we certainly could, could do much better for sure. There's a lot, as you spoke about, diversity and inclusion is part of it, but there are so many things going on in Hamilton County. We try very hard as a board to, to make as many people feel as welcome as possible. I read a little bit up on the refugees and there's 26 million in the world and only like 1%, let me make sure I do it right, it's less than 1% would be considered to go into another area. So I'm not going to speak to the resolution and as I think you mentioned earlier, the resolution that was passed two years ago, I also was part of that passage. So very supportive of refugees. And so for me, the question is, should we be specific about Afghanistan refugees or should we include Haitian refugees, or should we just say refugees? I think we've made it clear that refugees are welcome here. So whether or not we put it on the agenda, that'll be up to the entire board. So I will open it up to Vice President Reese for any comments or questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and certainly just want to piggyback on, Madam President, what you indicated and a lot of the information that's been presented. And probably would like to get more information on these other recommendations that you're putting forward. Wanted to ask the administration on some of the other things, because we have an Economic Inclusion Advisory Council, we just got up, but we haven't had results yet. It's just moving. We have already a lack of inclusion in Hamilton County is getting going. We've got titles, but we don't have the results yet. And so as we're looking at keep creating more commissions, for me, I like to see some best practices to see if these other ones that are being created, because they just got going and we still have issues. We had, we had a report that came out where we spent $16 million in contracts on the banks for the two stadiums. $1,400 went to minority businesses. So we still got a lot of work and I just don't want to just keep creating stuff without what you're saying, the results. I'm certainly, I don't have a resolution in front of us and I agree with Madam President when we look at being a more inclusive county for people coming, but we also have, we have a lot of work to do for people who are here being inclusive and we haven't done a good job of that yet. But this board is working through years and years of folks being locked out. And we're trying to get folks that have been living here to be included here. We have high, we have high unemployment rates, we have pockets of places that are in poverty that's just horrible. We've got, people can't afford to live here, affordable housing crisis, we've got a homelessness crisis. So you're absolutely right, we want to, we need to get on good footing so people would want to come here, because when they come here, there are opportunities. So I'm very interested in those, those suggestions that you have, and we look forward to working with the board on those, on those suggestions and how they can work. I'll be honest with you, I'm not the symbolism person. That's not me. I'm very much on delivery and action. So a lot of times we say, oh, we're going to do a resolution just to symbolize. If we don't have the power, I'm not as excited about doing it, but it doesn't mean that I don't support, it's that I want to make sure that whatever we say we're going to do, we actually can provide those services. I would like to know though, when you talked about the region, I want to make sure I understand this, you used the word expecting 225 people, refugees rather, I'm sorry. Could you clarify, is that the total number or we're looking at, is that just one?
Yes, that's correct. Those are the number of individuals, either refugees or SIVs, that we, that the federal government has directed to the, this region, that we would resettle.
Okay. And then when you say this region, does that include other counties? Because I know a lot of people I see, they live down in Butler County, not in, or they're in Warren County, not necessarily Hamilton.
Correct. It does include the immediate surrounding counties in this region, but Hamilton County is by far the, the one that, where we find the housing and places to resettle most refugees that we resettle here.
Okay. And then are there any federal resources that are assisting? Or you had mentioned something that you're already kind of working with jobs at family services and, so you're doing some interaction with, with the county now?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, we have very close partnerships to, to the Hamilton County entities as well as many other organizations. There's a broad refugee support network in the community and many volunteers that work with us.
Okay. So we would just be building on kind of what we're, we're connected, but then trying to just build on that and make it a little tighter?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, Madam President, that was all the questions that I had. I want to thank you for your work. I really do. And I thank you for your testimony, giving real life experience, you know, coming into a whole new place, how to connect, where to connect, who to connect. And so I just want to thank Cincinnati Compass being a place people can go and not feel like they're alone. So I do want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. And just one quick question. When you talk about 225 people coming to this area, there's a really strenuous vetting process. So we say 225 are coming. What do you think we would end up with once they go through the vetting process?
So the 225 number that we've been given, and it is possible that those numbers could change, that the State Department would give us different numbers further into the year, but those are the number of people that are already in the pipeline that are due to be resettled. So actually, that number does not include any of the Afghan SIVs or the new parolee designation that I spoke about. That wouldn't include any of these. So any families that we would receive under those designations would be in addition to that number.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate the presentation. So I feel like we're talking about two different things. One is the establishment of some kind of commission to make recommendations to the board related to some of the challenges perhaps that the immigrant community may face. And so I'm intrigued by the idea of forming a commission. We could, you know, obviously create that in any way we want and with the, you know, could be a finite expectation where they exist for a certain period of time and then make recommendations to us as a board. So I would be interested in maybe looking into that and maybe having it look a lot like the Economic Inclusion Council that we already have, which has certain seats designated by different organizations to guarantee diversity on that board. And so I wonder if that structure would lend itself to something like this. So I'd be happy to try to pursue that and look into it. Obviously, the entire board would have to be in agreement on something like that, but I am intrigued by the idea of establishing something like that and kind of looking into it with the help of Compass. The other thing is the resolution related to the Afghan refugees. And so I think the idea is to make sure that people understand that Hamilton County is a welcoming community where we want folks, and you made the economic case with some of the slides, and I think that's very compelling. I also think it's compelling to know that we are accepting of people into our community and we want to make sure that they thrive once they get here and trying to understand those challenges and those dynamics. And so we're in the middle of a national situation right now that I think I was asked to respond to by way of a resolution, so I put something together. I appreciate the edits because it is, it is not where it needs to be and I, so I appreciate the edits to it. And so I will continue to work on that resolution. It's not in front of, we've had it in front of us before, but it is not up for a vote today at the meeting, and so it's not literally in front of us. But I will continue to work through that. And Madam President, with your deference, I'll bring it forward at a different meeting or give it to the other offices to make sure that it's been looked at carefully by everyone and fully vetted and see if there's support for the resolution related to the Afghan refugees and making sure that we have made a statement as Hamilton County that those refugees amongst others are welcome in Hamilton County. So I appreciate your edits to the resolution duly noted.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So we'll go to our next item on the agenda. Update on the industrial revitalization, former Dow Chemical site. Yes.
If I could just briefly, as we're getting this item up and running here on the PowerPoint, just a quick note for the board and for the public who may be watching, just so that we connect this in with past work of the board. So this project that we're getting ready to hear an update on goes back to November of 2019, when the board at that time approved an agreement with the port for $250,000 to help remediate and redevelop the former Dow Chemical site in Redding, in Redding, Ohio. The county's dollars specifically went for things like due diligence, site remediation, et cetera. We're going to hear a little bit more about that today. But just for the public who may be watching, the county's investment in a site readiness strategy in general has really been in place since back in 2015, 2016, and really focuses on the idea that unlike some of our Greenfield county, counties that surround us, Hamilton County does not have large tracts of open developable land. So many times in urban counties, we have to, as the public sector, go out, acquire, get property under public control, and clear some obstacles away in order to have that land be someplace where someone would want to invest in it, create jobs and bring, especially to bring manufacturing back. So that's a little bit about how this project got started and just wanted to provide that groundwork for people who may be watching at home, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. That was well done. My name is Linda Fitzgerald and I'm the Economic Development Director for the city of Redding, have been for about 38 years now. And this project that we are here to talk to you about is the Redding Reisenberg Avenue site, a former Dow Chemical site. It's an exciting project. It is challenging project. It's going to require some patience and time and hard work. And I feel that with our Port Authority and with help from you folks and other government agencies, we are doing just that and I really feel it's going to happen. So, do I control this? Let's see. There we go. So before I tell you a little overview on the property, I did want to give you a little context of the project within the city of Redding. We are a working class city, traditionally steeped in manufacturing and industry, and we are landlocked. And as a result, this is why our future depends critically on reclaiming brownfield sites like the Dow property. This project is a priority for two reasons. And these reasons are reflected in Hamilton County's Strategic Economic Development Plan as well as in the city's master plan. Number one, it will expand the county's advanced manufacturing cluster. And number two, it will meet the challenges of first suburb communities by returning underutilized properties back to productive use. So now I ask you to look at the property overview here. The site is 25 acres, which is one of the few remaining developable sites in the I-275 Beltway in Hamilton County. It is industrially zoned, which reflects the historic use of the site. It's adjacent to Class 1 rail. And it was housed formerly with Dow Chemical and prior to that, Roman Haas Chemical Company. So before we even partnered with the Port Authority, as the city's development director, I said, okay, how can we go about redeveloping this very difficult, challenging site? So we went out, we talked to developers, and we said, what would it take for you to invest in this property? And they came back with two consistent messages. Number one, you have to have better access to the site. And number two, the uncertainty of the environmental, what was under the ground, what was in the water. So with help from the county, by the way, we were able as a city to build a new roadway to the site. We had a zero interest loan, which we've paid back. So then the other outstanding issue was this daunting task of the environmental. So we said, we think we know who we need to go to, to help us with this. And that was our partner, our perfect partner, I will say, the Port Authority. We clearly could sense that their mission was very similar to ours and that they were committed to working with distressed communities to bring properties back on to the tax roll. And that was their mission. So in November 2019, they acquired the site for $690,000. And they did due diligence totaling $187,000. So they have been busy since that initial acquisition. Okay. There we go. So the history of the site, it's pretty straightforward. It has 28 buildings in place, buildings that were used for processing, manufacturing, packaging, storage, maintenance, a powerhouse, laboratories, warehouses, and something a little unusual, water and waste treatment sheds and utility buildings. So it shows the breadth and complexity of the operations that occurred on that site. What did they do on this property, these chemical plants? They manufactured chemicals, including synthetic waxes, asphalt additives, antioxidants, phosphonium salts, and plastic stabilizer. Those names alone are somewhat daunting, and I think that they clearly are indicative of byproducts with chemical plants and brownfield sites. So the plant closed in 2014 and that was a big hit to the city of Redding. We lost 230 relatively high-paying jobs and a $4 million a year payroll. So before I let my comrade here, Melissa, take over, I wanted to just say this. This project also meets another one of the goals contained in your strategy, your Economic Development Strategy Plan. And that is encouraging the coordination among economic development organizations. On our own, the city's own, this project would be daunting at least and probably impossible. But by partnering with the port and the county and the But by partnering with the port and the county and the state and EPA, we are going to see that it does happen. And I want to end, because Mayor Bemis says I must always end this way, thanking you for the significant money, the $250,000, that you have previously provided us to do some remediation on this site. It's all of those contributions from all of those partners that are going to make this happen, and we are most appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Melissa Johnson. I am Executive Vice President at the Cincinnati Port Authority. We appreciate your time today to offer you this update on this parcel, which has been a strategic acquisition. And as Linda outlined, why and why it's been important for us to serve the Redding community in partnership in trying to move this property into its next phase. I believe you might have a copy of the presentation, but the next couple of slides are just to kind of show you its current state of disrepair. Linda referenced quite a bit of infrastructure with a number of buildings, most of which have been demolished. There are a few buildings remaining on the property that are partially demolished and in pretty severe state of distress. So the property is certainly compromised, which is another reason why we accelerated our interest in partnering here and moving it into a phase of redevelopment. We've made a lot of progress since 2019, but I think it's worth noting that these types of pieces of real estate are very difficult, very long-term strategic kind of acquisitions and redevelopments. Linda referenced environmental impact. I will say there are many players here with us throughout this project, and we'll talk about our development partner that we've been able to come to terms with and having a future private sector developer with us this early, which is really quite phenomenal. The property did operate as a former chemical plant, as Linda had mentioned. As a result, regrettably, from their operations, there is severe environmental impact on the property. There is groundwater contamination, mercury-contaminated soil, below-grade infrastructure that still needs to be remedied, and a multitude of other issues, as noted on the slide. I will say that one of the principles of the Port Authority is to also have environmental justice benefits to the community, that, you know, these residents that sit in quite close proximity to this parcel are, you know, experiencing this kind of blight and kind of environmental impact around them. So doing what we can to eliminate that or reduce it to the best of our ability is certainly one of the most priority issues that we see here. This property is also adjacent to a pristine superfund site, which is also, we're in collaboration there. We are also in regular communication with Dow Chemical Company themselves. They are involved with the regulating agency, which here is the Ohio EPA. So there is a significant amount of partnership that does continue in conversation to get this property moved into its next phase. Speaking of the regulator here, the Ohio EPA, the property is encumbered with an environmental covenant. There are restrictions on the property and requirements for it to have vapor barriers or instruments that kind of eliminate gaseous odors that transmit out of the ground into the air. So we're following regulatory guidelines in order to be able to satisfy the EPA and eliminate them where we can. There's been a lot of effort over the last year to eliminate some of those and prove to the Ohio EPA that the property is moving in the right direction. The property is all, is going to be under orders from the Ohio EPA, so we're collaborating with Dow Chemical with those. The city of Redding will be a partner, a party to those orders, and crafting those in a way that still perpetuates a good, positive development at the end, but certainly keeps all the parties intact relative to meeting the obligations of the Ohio EPA. As Linda also noted, she teed this up for me well, there's quite a lot of infrastructure left on the property. You know, it's hard to tell from this map that this is a survey of the property and what is left remaining from underground utilities to underground, what is called the groundwater extraction system, which is a fundamental element of the groundwater remediation treatment system. So there's a lot of pre-planning that has to be done in order to kind of tease out some of what is needed still for future development and what still, you know, needs to be remediated or demolished or taken off the property. So there's not only environmental challenges here, there are site development issues, significant ones, that are all a part of the planning process. So again, why this takes as much time as it does from acquisition to capital planning, your contribution is really, really important, as you can imagine, and I'll have a slide about the financial impact that the property has. But every source that we are contemplating and looking at, and certainly your support of the project, is really, really important and matters quite a lot. So I just want to say, as you know, Jeff, you mentioned our overall industrial strategy. We do have other industrial acquisitions throughout the county, and I thought this slide was interesting in terms of redevelopment profiles. So not only do they take a long time, they're very expensive, but there is a tremendous amount of need. We're pretty discerning about the acquisitions that we take on, mostly those that are severely chronic, have challenges that our private sector development partners shouldn't or won't be taking on. So we're trying to unlock inventory that probably needs the most public support. So on this slide is just a few variables that show, and I think the one that's most interesting is the redevelopment cost per acre. You can see 2000 West Street, which is the Dow Chemical property, far exceeds its other counterparts, just given the environmental drivers that we're facing here. So I did comment on the fact that we do have a private sector development partner. We had made that announcement several weeks ago with Nyer Properties. We are fortunate to have a forward-thinking development partner that who is not really scared away by the risk. You know, there's a lot of risk here in this piece of real estate, and they have committed to constructing, you know, multi-phase manufacturing, investment, industrial buildings at the site. So what you see here is a combination of money brought in by the Port Authority, opportunity to leverage other public sources of funding or traditional methods, your grant, your Hamilton County redevelopment grant, and certainly leaning in on Jobs Ohio. So we're still sorting through this capital plan, the sources and uses, but this is where we've identified the biggest opportunity to support the project, to push it into actual physical redevelopment. We also do have as a part of the port's industrial strategy, our return on investment metrics. So we crafted those four or five years ago as a part of our strategic planning process, and we benchmark this property against those ROI metrics. The outcome, at least what we would predict, is what you see on the far right-hand side and what we think the property could contribute back to Redding in job creation and in tax And then lastly, I just want to, again, demonstrate the length of time this takes, a lot of thoughtful planning and care, and then actual physical redevelopment. This is an initial conceptual timeline. This has moved and will continue to move a little bit as we get input from our, all of our partners, whether that's Jobs Ohio or Nyer Properties, or continue to plan internally in the organization. But this conceptually is what we're going to see from November 19th and then 2019, and then moving forward into probably 2022, 2023. I think that is it. If there are any questions.
Thank you so much. And I was looking at your timeline, looks like you're on schedule right now, so hopefully that will...
Close, yeah.
Yeah, and I've seen that area, and it definitely needs some remediation and redevelopment and all of that. So a lot of work to be done, for sure. Thank you for your presentation. I will open it up for my colleagues. Vice President Reese, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, and this is a very difficult redevelopment, to say the least. Could you go to the slide of the future development of the site? I think that part is important as well. After all of everything that you got to get done, we're, can you maybe talk through a little bit of the, we're talking job creation, wages, obviously property values. Can you maybe talk about that? I know that's the end result, but I just thought that was a positive slide.
Yeah, it's a really, it's a very positive slide. You know, the port's industrial strategy, given how long-term in nature the projects are, we have started to see some of the metrics be real and achievable. One of the things that is also noteworthy is that Nyer Properties has actually signed on to an agreement to work to deliver these. So, you know, we try and move them out of hypothetical to actionable, like you were saying, I appreciate your comment. So they can be realized by Redding and the community in long term. So our job creation density, we have 16 jobs per acre. We have benchmarked that nationally against other communities that are sometimes more aggressive than we are, or were more aggressive in other places that we've seen. $65,000 average annual wage is kind of a true point in manufacturing. We do see that. We collaborated with Reddy Cincinnati to do some data mining around what is achievable, what should be a good, sustainable, attainable wage for the broadest segment of the community for education and other socioeconomics that might be in that community, and manufacturing certainly will afford that opportunity. So the economic tax generation revenue is certainly also really important. I think we'll probably touch on this fact at a different point, but we do see studies that say, you know, for every mile, a homeowner might sit in proximity to, if there is an existing brownfield, you could see a decrease in property valuation as much as 10% to 15%. And then obviously the inverse of that, once there's cleanup and development. So even around the property, you'll start to experience more positivity just for having removed, you know, the asset in its current state.
And with Nyer as your partner, is it just going to be commercial, or will they...
It'll be industrial manufacturing.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Laura, sorry.
I think your point is really well-taken, that this is really what it's all about. And we really make an emphasis that where public money is invested, there has to be return back. We're not getting a return back, you're not getting your direct dollars back, but what we're returning back are the jobs and the capital investment. So what we're really doing is kind of protecting our industrial zone land from turning into warehouses and places where there's going to be very, very low-paying jobs and not very many of them. So that's why we've got both the density, the number of jobs per acre, and the wages, and the capital investments. All of it means you're going to build something here that's going to be here for a very long time and pay well. And one other factor in addition to what Melissa said is every manufacturing job creates 1.5 other jobs, because it's at the top of the kind of supply chain, and there are all these other companies that support that. So you're not only getting a manufacturing job, you're going to get other jobs because of it.
This could be huge for Redding, really, a really big shot in the arm for Redding.
This is the first piece of industrial property that we bought because the community begged us to. I had pleading, pleading letters from the mayor. So yes, I appreciate you recognizing it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just excited for Redding. It will increase the vibrancy of that area, and I know Redding is a proud community, and they are definitely in need of something, a shot in the arm. And so that's my goal as a commissioner, that we look at all communities and to try to increase the vibrancy of every community. So Redding is definitely in need of that, so, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for being here. This is a very exciting project. I've got two questions. Could you tell me how many other sites the port is involved with that are available for this kind of light industry? Because I don't feel like there are many, but I'm, and that obviously gets to this opportunity in this particular spot. But do you have other sites that are, that lend themselves to being the light industrial site that this one does?
To your point, in terms of the number of properties, there are a few. Collectively in acres, it's a little over 150, so, which I think is a great shot in the arm to our inventory here in the county. So we own maybe, let's see, four or five in total, so that 150 is kind of divvied up between there. We have focused on larger-scale sites from 10 acres or larger, but Section Road in Amberley Village, the former, or the excess acreage, which is 42 acres, we acquired from Formica Corporation in Evendale. Property, others, you know, just around, maybe in a smaller, more fragmented approach that we had throughout the county.
How many acres is this site?
25.
25.
25, okay.
Yeah, and I think it might be the largest industrial site for Redding.
Yeah. Well, it's a big deal, obviously, for Redding. Yeah, because Redding is a relatively small community by way of geography. My other question is related to your financial stack. So in light of what the state just passed related to brownfield cleanup, are, is there any anticipation that we might benefit from some of those dollars on this project?
I think so. I think what remains to be seen here is how quickly they will make those funds available. I think they're targeting adopting policy, applications, formalizing the actual programmatic side of it by the end of the year, I believe, is what I've maybe heard. So as much as we can always be in front of other sources of revenue, we are. We've still continued to apply for other grants, even up as, you know, recently as last month, for planning. But yeah, that source of funding is really timely, will be very, very important. One of the unique features about this particular property is that it sits in a different kind of environmental program than what the new state funding might actually look at, but that's why the Jobs Ohio money has become really, really important to us. So we're looking at all things.
Thank you. And just one follow-up to that. So could you help me better understand if this is a typical financial stack when you look at the private dollars going in by way of the loan to the developer, and then the public dollars that are being made available otherwise? Is this kind of typical of what you generally see when you're looking at a financial stack for a project like this?
I will say that, yes, generally. For this particular project, the capital stack is a little more diverse than what we've done in other places, because the use, this part of it is so heavy, you know, with the environmental, that we have a bigger gap to close. So we're leaning in on sources that we've not yet done and other parts of our inventory. So like you see, tax increment financing, that's kind of going to be special to this because it's so unique here. It's just been such a, the lift is quite great. But yeah, for the most part, these are things we would explore.
And just to supplement that, one thing that's different here is typically what we're doing is getting the site completely pad-ready and then marketing it. But in this case, because of the complexity of the environmentals, we wanted to bring a developer in first because we can save money. We basically need to know what a developer, how they will lay it out, what the vertical will look like. So then, because basically you don't have to do the same amount of remediation on a parking lot that you would where the building is. So knowing exactly how it's going to be laid out early was going to be more cost-efficient on the remediation. So we sought that relationship out earlier.
Can you let the public know who you are? Somebody may be watching and say, who is she?
I'm Laura Brunner, the president of the port.
President of the what?
Of the Port Authority.
Sound like you said. Okay.
My mask is too thick.
No, that's okay. I want people to know who's speaking. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much. So we'll move forward. And I know you have to leave, you have to leave. Okay, thank you. Okay. We have the Resolution Authorizing Updated Agreement with the city of Marie Mott. Did we figure out how to pronounce that, Marie Mott or Mary Mott?
I think it's Mary Mott.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did, so I did bring this before you a week or so ago, and so just to let you know, I didn't have a, don't have a new presentation or anything. It's the same. We're still trying to get Mary Mott to join the block program. HUD's legal counsel decided they wanted very specific language that we got after we approved it last time, so that's why it's before you again. But still the same, they want to join for the first time ever, which we're very excited about. So that resolution and cooperation agreement, they're essentially the same as a week or so ago, just a few wording differences.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese? Commissioner Drehouse?
I just want to thank staff for bringing in another community into the fund. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Thank you so much. Our next item is update on the American Rescue Plan. Jeff Aludor, our county administrator.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, back on the Mary Mott. I think the rationale for bringing that today was we needed the vote on it today to meet HUD's timeline. Emily, is that correct?
Yeah, it's still, it's due to HUD on Friday, because Thursday makes it pretty tight.
Okay.
I thought Thursday was, okay. We need to do it today, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if possible, Friday would be a pretty tight deadline. It would be helpful to have it passed today so we could have a little bit of flexibility there.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners.
With no further discussion as it relates to Marie Mott, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. Second. Let me just... Oh, I'm sorry. Adopt a resolution authorizing cooperation agreement with the village of Marie Mott for participation in the Hamilton County Community Development Block Grant Program. Second.
Commissioner Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Second.
Commissioner Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We'll move forward then to Jeff Aludo, our administrator, on an update.
Thank you, Commissioners. So wanted to provide the board just a very brief update on our American, our planning for the American Rescue Plan funding. As the board is aware, and just so the public is aware, our American Rescue Plan, or ARP money, comes from a federal stimulus bill passed earlier this year that provides the county with a hundred and fifty-eight point seven million dollars. And I'm going to go through much of this very quickly and get to the meat of the presentation here quickly. Funding can be used to respond to the public health emergency of COVID-19, respond to its negative economic impacts, respond to the needs of eligible essential workers in the community, to make investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, as well as to make up for lost revenue experienced by the local government, in this case, the county. The board held a very robust public input process that wound up designating our ARP dollars into four buckets, strengthening the public health infrastructure, stabilizing county finances and operations, addressing negative economic impacts, and addressing community infrastructure. And under each of these, there are programs for short-term and longer-term implementation, and that's what I want to get to in just a moment here. I do also want to touch, though, so as it not be left unsaid, is that all of that is on top of our cares and emergency rental assistance dollars, which in total, when we're looking at emergency rental assistance, winds up being about forty-three million, of which we've allocated close to a quarter of that, about eleven, close to eleven million dollars, and assisted over five thousand households. In terms of short-term implementation, again, the plan passed by the board includes short-term programming, things that are urgent, that we just need to get out the door quickly, and then some longer-term programs that require a bit more strategic thought in order to be as transformative as we possibly can in the community. So in terms of short-term implementation, we have projects like our mortgage assistance, which we want to get launched here in October, nonprofits and arts grants, which we want to get launched likely in November. We have the 513 Relief Bus, which is, we just heard earlier today, is already out on the road. We've got things like premium pay, or what would be called hazard pay, that we are in the process of allocating here over the next couple of months. And we have some other projects as well, like some pay-go capital construction projects, as well as an effort to relocate the Lincoln Heights-Evendale gun range, which are ongoing. So my purpose today wasn't to go through all of these, but just to point out to the board, and really more to the public, that there are short-term and longer-term programs. The longer-term strategic areas relate to these six areas. Public health and community resiliency, strengthening behavioral, mental health, and substance abuse response programming, affordable housing production and preservation, homeless prevention, workforce development, and childcare, and youth development. And on Thursday's agenda, we have an item coming forward to bring a facilitator on board to help assist us with some additional stakeholder conversations around these more strategic areas so that we can get recommendations back to the board by the end of the year. And again, for the public who's watching at home, the board's very well-versed in this. We have, for instance, close to forty million dollars allocated for affordable housing and homeless services. We made a very strategic decision that as opposed to just throwing those dollars out in grants, that we wanted to bring some stakeholders together and talk for just a couple of months about what is the best way to allocate these dollars so that we don't look back in five years and say that we missed an opportunity. Same thing for all of the rest of these, whether it's public health infrastructure, youth development, workforce development, et cetera. So the purpose of the facilitator that will be, and this will be on Thursday's agenda, is to organize and manage the stakeholder process, facilitate stakeholder discussion and analysis. And this is where it gets very important, gather and review and report on data as needed, assist with root cause analysis so that we're making sure that we are looking at the root, what is the root cause of the problem that we're talking about, especially as it relates to how COVID impacted this particular area, bringing community case studies and best practices to bear, coordinating the prioritization of project concepts, and developing recommendations and reporting back to the county. In terms of the process, we want to kick this off in late September. The stakeholder sessions would take place in October and November. The first meeting would be problem identification and root cause analysis. The second meeting would be best practice review and decision-making. And the third and fourth meetings would be prioritizing projects and operationalizing recommendations. And mind you, the way this will work is there's four, it'll be roughly four meetings for each of these stakeholder groups. So four meetings for housing, for mental health, for public health infrastructure. So those, each of those stakeholder groups will have four meetings to get through all of this. So it's a lot to get, it's a lot to get through in a short amount of time. But at the same, at the same time, we recognize the board's position that it's okay to take a few months to talk about this, but we don't want to take too long because we recognize that while some of those shorter-term programs are urgent, this is extremely urgent as well, and we don't want to take too much time to get these programs out on the road. So Commissioners, that's all I really have. I do have next steps. We've got the resolution coming on the ninth. We have the coordination of the stakeholder groups and the project kickoff in late September, with the report and recommendations back to the board in December. And I would also indicate that we will continue to, along the way, be getting out RFPs and opportunities for the public to participate in our more short-term programming, whether it be through small business assistance, mortgage assistance, nonprofit assistance, et cetera. So Commissioners, with that, I wanted to fire through that pretty quickly, but I'd open it up if there are any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Looked at the long-term goals or groups that we want to work with. And I just have to say, all of them seem to me should be short-term. You're talking about youth, you're talking about homeless, you're talking about, not you. We're talking about childcare, we're talking about mental health. All of those things are going on right now. And I know we can't just jump out there and pass money out. I'm not trying to do that. But I'm just really concerned about, and the, you know, the facilitator idea, we agree with that primarily, but they're going to have all these stakeholder meetings and, you know, one to two months. And my, and I'm just speaking, I can only speak for myself, is that we have to get this money out. I mean, we have people come and they talked on Zoom about their children that are dying in the streets. They're in different centers, and these kids don't have anything to do. And these people that want to work, and they don't have childcare. We know all those things. So we're talking about having these facilitator meetings, and I, I mean, I don't have an answer. But I am very concerned about, I mean, this money, this ARP money has been here not long, and I know we have to have a strategy. But I'm not sure how we decided that youth and childcare and all that is long-term, and small business is short-term. I'm not clear about that. And so I just really have a concern about getting this money to the people quicker. And we don't want to leave money on the table. We want to have regulations and standards so we can be accountable about this money. But I just see people, and we all see people that are struggling now. And how do we meet those needs now? And I'm just, not for really any answers, but I guess that's just my frustration, and I know how hard you guys are working. But at some point, we're going to have to, you know, let go a little bit and let some of the money go and not be so. I know we got acknowledged in Columbus for having one of the greatest strategies, either for the CARES Act or for the CARES Act. And so we do things well. And, but I'm not sure, and I'm not going to be repetitive. I just don't know how we can get this money out quicker and how we can determine, you know, who's long-term and who's short-term. So I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm just, you know, just a little frustrated. When I tell people we're going to have the business cards, and this is where you call for help, and then there's going to be a couple of months. I know we're going to have a press conference this week about small businesses and getting that started. But I'm just concerned about the other groups and how we meet them where they are quicker. So, Vice President Reese, and I mean, did you want, did you, not, I mean, you, Jeff. I was speaking to you as the, for the administration.
Thank you, Madam President. So just a couple of things. I agree with you. We certainly want to get things out as quickly, money out on the street as quickly as we can. I think the long-term, short-term avenue was part of the plan that we brought back to the board in the late summer for approval. I would say that in terms of where I think some of your questions are, in terms of addressing and helping some of these, especially at the grassroots level, some of these groups that are doing good things with children, whether it's food, et cetera, many of those fall directly into the nonprofit area, which, as we get our nonprofit grant out the door, will help with many of those organizations. I think we had some organizations in a little bit earlier on this year to provide some input on what they were doing and how they were impacted specifically by COVID. So I think some of those, some of those groups will be assisted. So the longer-term issues are things that involve big, long-term strategic questions for this county, for instance, on the issue of health infrastructure. Are there things from a health infrastructure perspective that when, if we get hit with another pandemic, two, three, four years down the road, that all of us collectively together, public and health, and our private health partners, can look at right now and say, what do we need to invest in right now? So when that pandemic, God forbid, comes down the road again, we can all look back and say we invested dollars in an effective way to make sure that the next time, we're better able to address that. On the affordable housing question, we know there's going to be some element of production. We know there's going to be some element of rehabilitation. We know there's going to be some level of rapid, of homeless prevention. How to get those dollars on, the best way to get those dollars out on the street and leveraging other investments, and making sure that we're investing in the right areas with the proportionate amounts. Those are the big-picture questions we want to answer, while at the same time, addressing many of those groups that need assistance right now. So I hear, I hear what you're saying, and the administration here is the urgency of making sure that we don't take any longer on this than we have to.
And I appreciate that, Jeff. And you were saying like nonprofit going out the door. When are, in two months, in sixty days, or have you have a timeframe of when that nonprofit money is going to?
Yes, I'm sorry, I mentioned it during the presentation, but it wasn't in writing. So we're looking to get the nonprofit grants out the door probably in November of this year. So we're, right now, are out on the street for a coordinating organization to help us coordinate that. Unfortunately, due to federal procurement, it requires us to do that RFP. So we're going to get that organization on board, and then we will launch the program probably in early November.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice President Reese?
Thank you. And I do share some of the concerns in terms of timing. We are in a nine-one-one right now out there. Today, federal unemployment stopped, so it's about to get real out here for a lot of people. And we already have a lot of people that are hurting without this being stopped. So that's going to be huge. Our homeowner program, I know we're waiting, I guess I saw in your report, we're waiting for some more guidance, but certainly want to get that moving. I mean, because the banks, the problem is the bill collectors now are, they're not under any moratoriums anymore. So even though, you know, rent relief, people kept saying, I want a moratorium, I want a moratorium. It's over now. The people want to get paid or either get thrown out. We had a moratorium on the water bills. You either pay or you get your water cut off now. We wanted a moratorium on the gas and electric. But now you either pay or you're going to get turned off now. So things are getting, the timelines is not necessarily our timeline. It's now the timeline of the private sector. Everybody wants to get back to how things were. And that means a lot more people are going to get cut off. The timeline is going to be stepped up. The pace is being stepped up. And so we definitely want to be responsible for the dollars. We got to do that. But we got to step the pace up. We got to be almost like an entrepreneur. An entrepreneur has to be nimble, has to be able to pivot with the times that we're not driving those timelines. The timeline is being drawn by the marketplace. The banks are not holding up foreclosing anymore. The rent landlords are saying, we got to get paid or you got to get out. The gas and electric is saying, you better pay or you're getting turned off. And so that's going to increase the pace for us now. So would like to see those timelines as well. For me, what helped me is that I don't really have a full picture of what our capacity is. You know, we have employees. What are they, what are they responsible for? Who can do what? So when we come back, say we need more people, I really can't, because I don't know what we were doing in the first place. Because I'm, you know, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage coming in. What are we doing, what we were doing, is it still good, or do it, that's over with and we need to move somebody over here? Do we have flexibility? Who can do what? What are those areas that need to be added and why? And if we're adding, I want it to be because we're speeding it up, not adding just to be getting back to the numbers we had, you know, prior to the recession. The facilitator, I guess my question would be, is the facilitator and equity consultant the same person? Or are those two different people?
Two, two different things, Commissioner.
Okay. And then I had asked privately, but I wanted my board members to know, I did ask, from an equity, what is the definition? Because everybody's throwing around equity. It could mean a lot of things, as I indicated to our administrator. Equity could be racial equity, it could be senior citizens versus youth, it could be inner-city versus suburban. Equity is a kind of out-there term. So I wanted to define what that is, if we're having an equity consultant to look into all of the money. And, and like you said, the timeline on facilitators, equity consultants, those things get to move pretty quickly. My last thing, I would just say that, for me, is that we, I guess the way we've been doing things, we don't identify, kind of the board, we don't identify, this is the stuff we want to fund, the exact program. I guess in the past, we've been doing it in buckets. Now I want to know, one, is that the law, or is that just something we always did? So I know, I mean, I'm not really here to kind of say, oh, we've been doing this for twenty years. If this is the law, that's one different thing. If you're saying this is just the way we've been doing it, I'd like to know that too, because that may need to be looked at. But then if it is the way that the law that we do it, I just want to make sure that these nonprofit, whoever the person is that gets the RFP, they're really clear about what we believe is important. And I can't speak for the whole board, but I'll say for me, I want to make sure that some of those grassroots organizations, that they're able to participate because they're closer to the, to the ground, and maybe they can't get the whole contract, but they got some things they can do. We heard from some with mental health, the nose. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Administrator, administrator, but those are things we want to have in the RFP. I don't want all of the money going to all these big organizations, and then we get all of the complaints that, one, there's no inclusion, two, the grassroots groups can't get any funding. We want to see what type of things they can do at that, that level. And I would like to see this homeowner money, this five million dollars, get moving as quick as possible. We vote on stuff here, and then it might be two months, and it comes back, I say, I mean, I thought we already had the money out the door. So it takes us sometimes three votes to get the money going out. So if we can streamline that, that will be helpful. I don't want to have a press conference, and then it takes another two, three weeks before the money shows up or the money is available. So those are the things that I guess I would add to it. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. But I just wanted to highlight that the timetable and the speed is going to increase as all of these moratoriums have been pulled back. So thank you, Madam President, and Mr. Administrator, and I look forward to working with you on these issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to thank the administration for their work on this. I do want to point something out, though, that I don't want this to be unsaid. We have short-term. We have short-term projects and we've got long-term projects. And the short-term money, such as rent relief and utility relief, is on the street. I mean, it is available through JFS and otherwise through CAA. So some of this money, the short-term money, is rolling out and we are doing a presser on small business relief. So I don't want to give people the impression that none of this money is going out because some of it is. And this board has identified what we want to put in the short-term bucket and the long-term bucket. And I can't think of a better example of a long-term than the housing money. $40 million worth of money going out to address housing in this community is unprecedented by this board. And so I think we do need to take a very deliberative approach to that, that we've got one pot that's going out more quickly, which is the mortgage relief that we all agreed had to go more quickly. But that 35 million that we're spending related to housing, there are potential partnerships and opportunities to leverage money, especially with the city, that I think we all agreed we wanted to take advantage of. And so I think that's part of the reason for some of this longer-term, more deliberate approach. I don't disagree that, you know, the money needs to get out as quickly as possible. And with the CARES Act funding, we were really pushing money quickly out the door because we had a deadline. Some of this money was intended to be long-term because it's over, what, three years? Three or four years, five years? That we've got to spend it. So I think some of it's intended to be long-term and more transformational, as we've all discussed here at the board level, about some of the transformational opportunities here. Because it is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really make some change in this county. So I don't disagree that, you know, we want these monies to go out as quickly as possible. But I do want to draw this distinction between the short-term pots and the long-term pots because from my view, those are different things and relative to the process, you know, the facilitator is supposed to help gather people from our community to inform some of these long-term decisions.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, Vice President Reese had a, had a question. I just wanted to make sure this guy answers well. Just in terms of the process for the, how we roll programs out, so the board, as it relates to whether it's CARES or AARP, the board typically approves, let's say, a small business program. So the administration will go back, we will put together the criteria for that program and then we will ultimately provide that criteria to the board. And then if there's any questions or, questions about why we're, why we have a certain criteria or why we are requiring this, that, or the other, within the scope of that criteria, the board can then ask about that. And we have in fact, in the past, changed things when the board policy wanted to say, push for, say, a lower employee number or something like that. So to your question about how, how does, how do the programs evolve? That's typically the way it goes, is the board will set the desire, say, to do a nonprofit program, the administration will put that together, recommend that program and that program criteria back to the commission, we get that approval and then we move forward. So there's, there is that back and forth in terms of the development of the program.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, thank you Jeff for that clarification. I do want to clarify something, one other thing I would like to know, how much CARES Act money is left over? That has to be spent by the end of this year, I'm told, I guess. So that'll help me to see which, we put money in pots, but not necessarily, they don't spend it sometimes all. And just want to know how much CARES Act money before we, obviously we're dealing with AARP money. Now, I want to also just clarify, be clear about what my comments were. Long-term, I don't have a problem with housing, producing new housing product, having a housing plan. Where the state of emergency is coming, rental assistance, we've been dealing with that since last year. So yes, we got lots of rental assistance, it started last year. But whenever we have to have something start up, sometimes it takes us a little longer to get it moving. And it could be because treasury port, I don't know what the other things are. But I want to say that in Hamilton County, there are a lot of homeowners who have to, they downstairs, they've been twisting with the, the treasurer's office paying, having to pay these property taxes. And we have no program currently for homeowners. If you're a homeowner and you need help with your utilities, we don't have anything available for you. And so I'm saying the $5 million, even though we said, right, it sounds good, we say it's right out the door, it ain't out the door. You cannot call 211 and be directed to us to get any support for homeowner. And this was one piece that was very important to me. All of us gave different things. This is one of my number ones. Because being out there, I kept hearing from homeowners, whether it was speaking at the Rotary Club, at the Kenwood Country Club, or whether it was in Avondale, talking to homeowners that just bought their home, what do you have available? We can't get utility help. So that's what, the things that I'm talking about and I was pigging back on what Commissioner Dumas was saying as well, those kind of things, we got to step up. Because the banks, when they say you got a program, they want to know you got the money right now. We don't have money right now. We've allocated, we voted for it, but it ain't ready to go. If somebody called us today, we have nothing for them. So that's the part that we're saying, if there's in some kind of way, it's not a put down to the administration, is what can we do? Because homeowners right now can get no help with the water bill, no help with the gas and electric bill, and no help with the mortgage through us. Now you're going to say, well, we got CAA. They've got a backlog, I heard, they testified, almost 4,000 people, they're waiting to call back. So we put $5 million, not to CAA, but to, I guess, JFS we're going to have. And I'm saying, can we get that out the door in the next seven days? Can we get it out the door in the next 48 hours? That's the type of speed and we voted on it, I don't know what month it was, wasn't it March? Think we voted on it in March. I think, what are we in now, Labor Day, September? So if we can do that, that is a short-term. We understand that building houses, investing in, what is that housing plan going to be? I totally get it, I'm totally for, we got to have some planning and sitting down. But I don't need a consultant to come in to tell me these homeowners need help yesterday. So if we can move that up, that would certainly be one of my top list things, in addition to the small business, which we are rolling out on Friday. And I believe money, money will be available. Will it be available on Friday? Or we just rolling out on Friday, small business money?
For, I'm sorry, the-
The small business money?
The process goes live on, yeah, the process will go live on the 16th or the 17th. So that's when people will be able to apply for those dollars, correct?
So that's ready to go. So just the housing one is the one I had concern about. So thank you.
That's great. I have a concern about all of them. I'm glad that we're going live on the 16th, that is awesome. I know Senator Sherrod Brown, he calls me about every other week about the rental assistance, the legislation that he had passed. And he said, in the state, only 10% of the money has been spent. And he's been asking me, what can we do? Is there any way that he can help to make that money get spent quicker? And we're, I told him all the strategies that we're using, he said, well, Hamilton County sounds like they're doing more than anybody. So, but we, we need to do more. It was mentioned earlier about short-term, long-term implementation. And so we're aware of that, I mean, we agreed on it and we understand what short-term and and long-term means. But we're just saying, I'm just saying, that as we look at short-term and long-term, it was mentioned earlier, we have four years to spend this money. Well, I, I don't really care if we have four or 10 years. If we could get this money spent in a year and a half, that would be great. That means the people are giving the money right away, they're getting their needs met. So I don't want us to, to sit on our laurels because we have four years to spend it. So, and there's no way we can justify, that I can justify, the monies that are going out, the percentage of monies that are going out right now is unacceptable to me. And so while people are waiting and desperate for these monies, so as we said earlier, we will try to move these monies quicker and streamline the process and that's all I'm interested in.
And Madam President, just very quickly to your comment, and, and thank you for, for your comments. I think you're correct that from a, from the perspective of getting the money out as quickly as possible, I think you're right. The, we are, we are getting emergency rental money out on the street. I think you're correct that, I think you had heard from the state that we're, Hamilton County is doing about as good of a job as, as it's being done in terms of getting it, getting it out there. I don't have a spreadsheet showing me every, every community in, in the state, but just my calls with other urban counties and, and calls with CCAO, that appears to be the case. There is, and this gets to the question of mortgage assistance and Vice President Reese's question on capacity. We are working through some, some questions on mortgage assistance to try to make that as efficient as we can, how we can work directly with, with landlords. We are also trying to get as much rental assistance out on the street as possible because the federal government has identified some soft dates of late September of this year as to get money obligated and committed, or else they have said that they would come back in and pull some of that money back and send it to communities who have spent more of it. So we have all the capacity we can at JFS devoted to emergency rental assistance and that has meant keeping some of that capacity back as we put together the mortgage assistance program. But we do look to have that program for mortgage assistance up and running by October because we do know per Commissioner Reese's comments that it's more than just the renters, there are, there are homeowners that are going to be facing the same issues. So I just want, for, for the board and for the public, I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you and I appreciate it. And as a board or as county staff, we cannot take the full ownership of this problem because we have to have people that are in need to come forth. They have to call, you know, they have to send an email, they have to, the landlords have to come forth. So I am, I just want to make it clear, I'm in no way saying that we are the culprits of this entire problem. We need people to speak up and say what they need. We, we can't go out and find you, some of them we find, but you have to speak up. We've been saying forever that the money is there, it's available, so you need to be resourceful, people that are listening and tell your neighbors about where you can contact different areas to get some of the things that we provide to the community. So I want to make, make sure and make it clear that it's not just on us, it's for people to advocate for themselves also.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to piggyback on that, I was going to mention that, so we've, we've got these dollars, let's take rent assistance in JFS. So I think we've got the capacity to get those dollars out, but you are right, people aren't applying for the dollars, or rather, not approaching JFS about the need. So for the first time, in my knowledge, we're actually going to be advertising about what we're doing and about how to apply for that assistance, where to go, with the contact or, you know, the 513 relief and how that's kind of the contact point for all these things. But I talk to people all the time that are like, what's available? I mean, you know, they, they don't even, renters and, and folks that, where their dollars are there? And it's so frustrating, it's like, oh my gosh, you need to go to 513 relief and just access these dollars. And so we are launching, I don't remember when, soon, a marketing campaign to go up on the radio and to go whatever else has been recommended by our communications people to make sure that people are aware of how to access these dollars. Because you're right, you know, it, it's so hard when you hear people that are in need and they are not even aware of the dollars being available. And so we just need to do a better job and I think we're all trying to communicate out what we have in the short-term and the long-term and say, help is here, please jump on 513 relief and access that help. Because right now, that's just not universally happening.
Thank you. And I love the billboards, I saw the billboards that are up too, so.
Madam President?
Okay, yes.
And I, I do want to acknowledge the, the administration. I'm a marketer by trade and we're in a new, we're in a new world now. People don't get their news from one place or another source. There's multiple ways, multiple options. And so we're doing that and create a way, I think, the texting that went out, everything from that to the radio commercials have started, I've heard them. And let me say that once we started doing these things, I've been out there, we were at CityLink and the bus was supposed to show up or was going to be showing up, I think it was like maybe 3 o'clock or something like that. People were lined up because of the commercials started and explained it to them in a certain way. They, there was a line when the bus showed up, people were in line, ready to go. I do think that people, one, we're dealing with people who've never had to ask the government for help ever, never. We're dealing with people who in their lives said, I don't want to go into a Johnson Family Service building. There are a lot of people got their, their own reasons, their own pride, they want to, you know, they've never had to ask for help. So I think the creative ways that we're doing, trying to get to people is, is helpful, going into their community where they feel a little, you know, they, they don't feel like they have to come downtown or anything, it's a little more comfortable for them. But we're also building relationships. Some of them never had these type of relationships with Hamilton County, they haven't seen Hamilton County having to do something like this. The things that we're doing is innovative as a board. We're doing business different, we're bringing Hamilton County resources to them. So I, I do want to say that, well, yes, we want more people to come forward, but we were out in Colrain Township at the senior building and a lady was a landlord and came out and said, I got, I need, you know, my person owes me $10,000. And a Caucasian woman, and she didn't know anything, she said, I don't, I'm not asking for a favor, I'm, I'm a, I own two properties and I need to get paid. And she didn't know about this and she followed us to the next location and got signed up. So, you know, you're right, we love for everybody to kind of know everything we're doing, but I think we're, we're hitting them in different ways, hitting them in creative ways and, and we're plugging away. And I think that's why our county's doing better than most of the counties throughout Hamilton County. I was up in Canton this weekend and they wanted to know, can they get the, can our bus go to Canton? I said, no, we can't have our bus, you got to get your own bus. So we are doing some innovative things, we still got ways to go and it's so much that's available, sometimes it's hard to consume it all, that wow, you've got all of this. But the 513relief.org helps people to go to one spot and be able to get that information. So I just wanted to commend the administration and a lot of JFS, they out in that hot sun, hot sun. And they're out there and they're helping people. And so I do want to acknowledge that I think we are doing some things to, to get the word out and I want to thank the administration for that.
Thank you. We'll move forward, we have an executive session. I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property.
Second?
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.[1576.99]